And welcome to the City of Fairhope's organizational meeting. Would you please rise for the invocation given by Music Pastor Timothy Clark in Celebration Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Father, we thank you first and foremost for your love and your mercy. I can't imagine where I would be without you in my life. Lord, I thank you for new beginnings, a chance to start fresh. Just as winter makes way for spring and spring for summer, you take us from one season to the next. And as we begin this new season for our city, I pray for wisdom for these men and women as they will have to make decisions that affect all of us. Give them wisdom now and not when it's too late. Father, we thank you for the favor and blessing you've shown our great city and ask that you move in a mighty way through this council and our new mayor. Jesus, we thank you again for all you are doing in our community and we pray that all that happened in this room and behind closed doors brings glory to you. May our city and its leaders be known as a place where we honor you in what we say and how we live. We ask all this in the powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
(affirmative) Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the newly elected council members and mayor come forward, please, to be sworn The Honorable Jody Bishop, Circuit Court Judge with the 28th Judicial Circuit, State of Alabama, will do the honors of swearing in the elected officials.
Congratulations if you'll raise your right hand. I, Saint Your Name, I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Y'all can take your seats. The next item on the agenda is for the council to elect their city council president. I'm asking for nominees now.
If I heard you're electing for nominee, I'd nominate Jack Burrell for council president.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Council President, will you come take your seat?
Yes.
Counsel, I want to say real quick before we move on that I'm truly humbled that you've chosen me and elected me for a ninth year as the leader of this governing body and I certainly appreciate it and I'll do my best to do the job with honesty and integrity and with respect for all of you and for the mayor and for the staff and the workers of this city of Fairhope. With that, we'll move on to nominations for city council, president pro temp. I will accept nominations from the council for city council president pro temp.
I'd like to nominate Jimmy Conyers.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of Jimmy Conyers for city council president pro temp. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Jimmy, congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to make any comments?
I just appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity and I look forward to serving to the best of my ability, so thank you.
Item number six is an ordinance regarding council rules of procedure. You will see that listed in your package there. There are 29 sections to those procedures. Clerk, I believe that there were no changes made to these procedures?
There were no changes.
Okay. Would anybody like to make additions or deletions or changes to these procedures? First, well, and let's do that before we introduce the ordinance as well. That way, if there are any changes, we can introduce the ordinance as amended. Will somebody like to introduce the ordinance then?
I'll introduce ordinance.
Okay, ordinance has been introduced. Now, council ordinarily an ordinance would lay over until the next council meeting for consideration, but being that this is our rules of procedure, I would suggest that we suspend with the rules and vote for immediate consideration, so I would entertain a motion for immediate consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for immediate consideration. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay. And counsel, I will ask for a motion for final adoption of these rules of procedure.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call the question, please?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next order of business is an ordinance naming Mayor Sherri Sullivan as Superintendent of Utilities. One thing that I believe that needs to be discussed is in section two, the amount of pay, which would be in monthly installments paid for by the utility system. I think we need to establish that before we introduce the ordinance, so does somebody want to give me somewhere to start?
I was thinking a range of maybe 15,000 to 20,000 is my range.
15,000 to 20,000, anybody else?
I was in 15,000 to 25,000.
I was looking more at 25,000.
20,000 to 25,000.
I was in the 25,000 to 30,000. Can we, so we're not too far apart on that then?
25,000.
You have, you ever suggest 25,000? Councilman Martin?
I suggest 25,000.
Councilman Conyers, you have any heartache with 25,000?
I mean, I can live with 25,000.
I can live with 25,000.
Good.
Okay, Councilman Boone?
Yeah. I believe I can live with 25,000.
Speak up. Okay, I want to also let it be known that, you know, if you read a lot of social media, there's been much said about this, which is, I think, is much to do over nothing. It's commonly done in the hundreds of towns, hundreds of cities throughout the state of Alabama where the mayor is named as Superintendent of Utilities and the mayor is already the head of the utilities as the chief executive officer of the city, so I believe that naming her is only natural. I don't think that you have to be an engineer to be the head of utility. It's more of a business position and I have confidence that Mayor Sullivan would do a good job in managing the affairs of the utilities as Superintendent of Utilities. And, you know, and if we don't like the job that she's doing, and I'm not saying we ever would not like the job, but if we don't like that, we can always change the way it's done. So if you don't have any more changes to the ordinance, that was the only spot that needed to be filled and I'd like somebody to introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. If there's no more discussion, I would like to entertain a motion for immediate consideration.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for immediate consideration. Any further discussion? Okay, on the motion of immediate consideration, clerk, will you call the question, please?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And now for final adoption. Would anybody like for me to read this? You all have this in your package.
Got it.
We're good? Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion for final adoption?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for final adoption, naming Mayor Sherri Sullivan Superintendent of Fairhope Utilities. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call the question, please?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, Mayor Sullivan. I know you'll do a great job, Seth. Thank you. Item eight is a resolution to eliminate and defund the position of operations director. You have the resolution in front of you, counsel. The operations director was currently at a grade of pay of 34. I'd just like to say that I think that it's a duplication of effort when you have the mayor as Superintendent of Utilities and it's not, nobody's losing their job here. There's nobody that's being terminated or let go, so I don't think that it's any harm and I think that we're contrary, once again, to what you read on the social media and other outlets, we are not costing the city money by putting Mayor Sullivan into the position of Superintendent of Utilities. We're in fact saving about $175,000 per year by placing her in that position and eliminating this position, so. Anybody else want to tag one of those comments?
Just glad you made that comment.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, being a new person on the council and sitting in the seats where you all are sitting now, there's a lot of information out there that we do not get and I have to agree that this is something that's universally done. I saw it with my own eyes, did not know it until I did see it with my own eyes because I was reading a lot of the hype that we put out in the media. So please do your due diligence before you start to visit this, okay? Let's love each other this time.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Martin. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to eliminate and defund the job of operations director.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to eliminate and defund the operations director position. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Counsel, items number nine and 10 were ordinances to repeal ordinance related to the allocation of funds collected from the City of Fairhope Sales and Use Tax. We do not need to amend those ordinances. There was a mistake made and what happened was there was a clause in there that was on a draft version that said that we would take funds and eliminate any short-term debt that we had. When the clerk and I started researching it more, after the agenda came out, we found out that it was only a draft version and that in fact, that the terms that Councilman Conyers and I had come to in coordination with the city treasurer and the city clerk was exactly the ordinance that we have now and that was to fund our reserve account up to $7 million and when we reached $7 million, a half a penny, which is 25% of the sales tax revenue, would go into a fund to prepay our debt and then the other half a penny, or 25% of the sales tax proceeds, would go into a capital funds, a capital projects funds to be spent on nothing but capital projects. So, once we looked at the language on that draft and we eliminated it, we found out that we were right exactly where we were already at with the existing ordinance, so there's no need to amend those. But I felt because it was on the agenda, I wanted to explain what had happened there. There were some reasons that we want to put money in the bank when we're borrowing short-term due to Hurricane Sally. We felt it best to keep our money in our reserve fund because we're earning over 2% interest on that and we're borrowing money at 0.78, so as Councilman Conyers would say, we're making about 150 basis points on our money, so we were trying to keep our money in the bank as long as we could and then pay down the debt, but the current ordinance will allow us to put that money in there and we will pay off that debt that we have to borrow until we receive FEMA reimbursement. We'll pay all that off in under two years, so. Any questions about that, counsel? I know that was very confusing.
No, I think that was well explained and unfortunately, we did spend a decent amount of time coming up with the language that already existed.
Yeah, you know, the good news is, Jimmy, is that we agreed with what we had already done. We didn't change our mind anyway.
Yeah, that was good.
Okay.
Good outcome.
All right. Okay, item 11 is a resolution for appointment of the city clerk of the City of Fairhope. Quickly read that resolution. It says, "Be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that Lisa A. Hanks is hereby appointed as city clerk. The term of the city clerk shall serve until the next general municipal election and until his successor is elected by the council and qualified." That's according to section 1143-3 Code of Alabama. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Lisa A. Hanks as city clerk. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Lisa, congratulations.
Thank you.
Best city clerk in the state of Alabama, bar none. Also thought of by her own peers and has been elected past president of the City Clerk's Association for the State of Alabama and has been nominated more times than I can count for. She holds up four, four fingers, so congratulations, Lisa.
Thank you.
Item 12 is a resolution, appointment of the city treasurer. I'll read the resolution. Be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that Kimberly, AKA Kim Creach, is hereby appointed as city treasurer. The term of the city treasurer shall serve until the next general municipal election and until his successor is elected by the council and qualified, also in section 1143-3 of the Code of Alabama. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Kim Creach as treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, Kim, where are you?
Outside, I think.
Kim, are you outside? Congratulations. Also, the finest treasurer in the state of Alabama, as evidenced by, just in the last month alone, she saved us, what, $1.2 million?
That sounds about right.
At least that?
At least.
Yeah, thank you, Kim. Okay, moving on, item 13 on tonight's agenda is a resolution for the appointment of police chief for the City of Fairhope. I'll read the resolution real quick. Be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that Stephanie Hollinghead is hereby appointed as chief of police. The term of the chief of police shall serve until the next general municipal election and until his successor is elected by the council and qualified, section 1143-5 Code of Alabama. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Stephanie Hollinghead as chief of police.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Stephanie, congratulations. Chief Hollinghead is in the back room. All-star police chief and chief, you do an outstanding job. You make us all proud and the way you carry yourself and the way you carry out your duties. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, item 14, appointment of the city attorney. I'm reading the resolution. Be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that Marcus E. McDowell is hereby appointed as city attorney. The term of the city attorney shall serve until the next general municipal election or until his successor is elected by the council and qualified. Be it further resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is authorized to sign an engagement letter between the City of Fairhope and Marcus E. McDowell for legal services. Entertain a motion for the appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, Marcus could not be here tonight, but he sends his regrets to the people in the crowd and also the council members and the mayor and the other appointed officials. Tuck Wynn, longtime city attorney who is a law partner of Marcus, is here in his behalf and just congratulations to your partner, Marcus, and we appreciate you sitting in for him and, you know, all the many years of service that Marcus and you two have given to the City of Fairhope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15, authorizing signees of all City of Fairhope accounts. I won't read all of this resolution, but basically if you will make the motion to appoint the signees for the financial depositories of the City of Fairhope, as Sherri Sullivan is mayor, Jack Burrell is council president, Lisa Hanks is city clerk, and Kim Creach as city treasurer. Also, it's resolved that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to use a computer-generated signature for routine checks under $1,000. That says $1,000, this spelled out is $2,500. That's supposed to be $2,500, I believe, isn't it?
It's supposed to be $2,500.
Okay, make that note on your resolution.
That's too different.
To write in $2,500.
Make a motion to approve as presented with the, that correction to $2,500?
Okay, we have a motion and if I may just step in real quick, I was looking for the depositories and.
On the back page?
Yeah, they're on the back. Ranch Banking and Trust Company, BBVA Compass Bank, Centennial Bank, and Region Bank. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint the signers on these accounts. Any further discussion? Okay, there being none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 16 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate a fee schedule with Hand Arndahl Harrison Sale LLC to perform professional legal services and bring back the engagement letter for approval by the council. If you read the resolution, it also authorizes the mayor to review the pending litigation and all current legal services with Hand Arndahl Harrison and Sale LLC and Jones Walker LLP and bring recommendations to the city council as to which firm should continue with our pending litigation. I will tell you, counsel, that I did speak to Mr. Matt McDonald with Jones Walker today and he is happy to continue where it makes sense to continue and understands the nature of the business, appreciated the phone call, and respects our decisions. I would entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I would also say that this includes matters concerning the planning zoning commission. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 17 is a resolution concerning our expenditure procedures. So a rather lengthy resolution, counsel. I'll hit the high points. City of Fairhope administration has the authority to spend on any operational budgeted item up to $15,000 in aggregate or budgeted amount, whichever is less. The Fairhope administration has the authority to spend on any operational non-budgeted item up to $5,000 in the aggregate and any purchase order over $7,500 requires the approval of the mayor. City treasurer and finance director will be electronically approved internally through MUNIS. That's something new as opposed to having to walk the green sheets around, making it a little bit more efficient. I would encourage department heads, mayor staff, to remember that although something may be on a purchasing list, to go out and get the three quotes, make sure that we're getting the best price for the city. Also, another highlight is that all professional services contracts over $5,000 must be approved by the city council and should the city council disapprove of the professional service chosen, they may select another from the list of those qualified. Those are the high points. Do you have any questions, counsel?
I would just ask that, I think it's going to be much more efficient and I would ask that the department heads and Kim just keep us posted on how much of an improvement this is in the process to go through MUNIS rather than walking green sheets around.
Okay, excellent. All right, can I entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 18 is a resolution just to establish a city council office here in city hall. The resolution just says, "Be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope that the city council hereby designates office number 107 in city hall to be used by the city council for purposes of carrying out their duties and authorizes a keypad for door access to be installed." We haven't had an office in four years and spoke to Mayor Sullivan about this and she thought that we should have one and it comes in really handy when you need some resources, clerk, mayor, treasurer, finance director, and you need a place to meet someone, you know, so we have a good professional space there. You can also keep your files there and, you know, keep all your awards you're going to win, Corey, in there and things such as that, so. I'll entertain a motion to designate this office as, to be used by the city council.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 19 is a resolution establishing the fiscal year 2021 holidays to be observed by all city personnel except emergency employees. You have a list there, counsel, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving holidays, half a day, Christmas Eve, Christmas holiday, New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day. And you see the dates, the year by that. I'll entertain a motion to adopt these holidays?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the holidays for fiscal year 2021. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the holiday schedule, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Okay, item 20, planning commission terms. These do not require resolutions, do they, clerk?
No, they do not.
Okay, these will be appointed and we basically just inserted council member Martin where council member Robinson previously existed, so from 11/22 to 8/31/21, servant on the planning commission will be Councilman Conyers. Congratulations, get to kick it off. I know you can't wait.
They're already loading up my inbox.
September 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022 will be Councilmember Martin. July 1st, 2022 to March 31st, 2023 will be myself. April 1st, 2023 to January 31st, 2024 will be Councilmember Brown. February 1st, 2024 to October 31st, 2024 will be Councilmember Boone. Council members, if something changes in your life, you have a life event that requires you to change those terms, they are flexible and they can be changed. Just get with me. Council liaison appointments. These are basically where a council member will serve as a liaison to the various departments within the city. Department heads, you're not obligated to speak only to these people, but these are your contacts. If you need to bring something before the council, this would be, you know, outside of the mayor, this would be the first person that you would contact. In regards to utilities, gas, water, sewer, and electric, council members Boone and Brown, seeing how they have degrees in building science. Parks and recreation and the library, be council members Brown and Martin. Finance and audit, be myself and council member Conyers. Public works and industrial recruitment, be myself and Councilman Conyers. Police, fire, and court matters, council members Martin and Boone. And once again, counsel, if you get in that role and you don't think you're suited for that role or you think you're better suited for another role, those can change as well. Board and committee appointments, item number 22 on tonight's agenda. The Eastern Shore Metropolitan Planning Organization asks you to The Eastern Shore Metropolitan Planning Organization asks you to appoint Councilmember Burrell and Mayor Sullivan. I'm currently entering my seventh year on the Eastern Shore Metropolitan Planning Organization. I currently serve as vice chairman, and don't want to get the cart before the horse, but I'm in line to become the chairman of this metropolitan planning organization, so I think it might be in Fairhope's best interest to keep me on that organization, and the mayor of each town on the eastern shore, as well as the mayor of Locksley, who's in the audience tonight. Thank you for being here. Mayor Teal also served, all the mayors served on the ESNPO. So for this, we need a motion for the appointments of Councilmember Burrell and Mayor Sullivan.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, congratulations, mayor. And this is, Mayor Sullivan, this will be nothing new for her. She's stayed on top of this. She's been on the Citizens Advisory Board for quite a while on this organization, so she'll be a shoe-in for that. Item number 23, these are appointments to the various boards and committees. I appoint myself to the Industrial Development Board, which I currently serve on, and also to the Recreation Board. And I also appoint Mr. Pat White as the employee liaison to the Recreation Board. Place two, Councilman Martin, I appoint you to the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board, the Recreation Board, the Tree Committee, and the Christmas Parade Committee. I also appoint a police officer and the employee liaison, Paige Crawford, to the Christmas Parade Committee. Who is, chief, who is typically on that committee as a police officer? Do I need to name, I can name them now if you would like for me to?
We don't really have anyone. It's myself or Shane Nolte who will...
Shane Nolte will serve as that capacity? Okay. I'll say Shane Nolte will be the police officer on the Christmas Parade Committee until such time you choose someone else, chief. Okay? Place three, Councilman Conyers, I appoint you to the Library Board, which you already serve on, the Museum Advisory Board, and the Recycling Committee. Also appoint Mr. Dale Linder as the employee liaison to the Recycling Committee. Place four, Councilman Brown, I appoint you to the Fairhope Public Schools Commission, the Historic Preservation Committee, and the Pedestrian and Bicycle Committee. Councilman Boone, place five, I appoint you to the Harbor Board, along with the employee liaison, Mr. Sean Say, and also appoint you to the Personnel Board, two boards that you've served on for a long time. Counsel, and if ever such time you have any desire to change boards, and we may be consolidating some of these boards and committees in the future, so that, what you hear tonight, you know, it may not be the same a year from now, but we're going to look at those and see if we can't reduce and combine, consolidate, and make these a little bit more efficient. Counsel comments? Councilman Martin?
Well, I think it's a good day. The day the Lord has made, so let's be glad and rejoice in it. You know, so let's remember that, and I like the team I'm on. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman Conyers?
I just want to say thank you again to the citizens, and especially thank you to my wife and daughters who are sitting out here in the audience. We didn't get to the 10 last time during inauguration. Unfortunately, just in memory of my brother-in-law, he was killed in a car wreck about four years ago, just four years ago today, so bittersweet moment, but excited to have my family here, looking forward to the next four years, excited to be working with Mayor Sullivan, and also having Councilman Martin join us. I think I echo your comments. We've got a good team, and I think the next four years is going to be really good, so looking forward to it.
Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Just looking forward to brighter days in the City of Fairhope, looking forward to serving Mayor Sullivan and Councilman Martin as well as the three of y'all again, and I appreciate the citizens trusting me with that duty.
Councilman Boone?
I'd like to thank the citizens of Fairhope for putting this council back in place and adding Councilman Martin down there. I think it could be a terrific asset to the, got some big shoes to step into.
Got some big shoes.
I think he can handle.
Yeah.
I think we're having a real good situation with our mayor Sherri Sullivan. I think it's going to work out real well, and I appreciate the citizens' confidence in us to take care of this, and I'm looking forward to the upcoming, next four years. Appreciate my family being here and looking out after me. Thank you.
Councilman Martin, I want to welcome you to the city council, and, you know, we had a shortened, we had a great short trip up to Montgomery the other day shortened by a visit from Zeta. But nonetheless, we got to know each other a little more, and really looking forward to serving with you. Councilman Robinson, you serve with dignity, and words of wisdom will always be remembered, and, you know, your family just continues to grow. I'll speak to you about that one day, but anyway, if you ever have a problem with overcrowding in the City of Fairhope, you can look back at Councilman Robinson as maybe one of the culprits there. But, you know, I really enjoyed serving with you, and we're going to miss you, and so thank you for your service to you. Thank you to outgoing Mayor Wilson for her service to the City of Fairhope, and I want to thank everybody, all the family members here, my wife Patty, my beautiful daughter Lauren, for being here. My son is off to college, could not be here tonight, but I want to thank all the family members of all the council members and the mayor Sullivan for being here. Mayor Sullivan, I'm looking forward to a wonderful four years with you and bringing this city together and doing great things. I know that it's going to be fun to serve again, and I, you know, I got up early, early this morning, and I went out in the backyard. Birds were flying around, they were singing, and drank that coffee in that cold crisp air. It was a beautiful day, and I think it's going to be a beautiful four years, and really looking forward to it.
Hey, Jack, I got to tell you my better half. Ms. Martin, I got to do that.
Yeah, you want to do it?
Both of them, my mama and my wife. I might not have a place to sleep tonight.
I say, you too late for that. They've already, we're already all done, and you messed up.
It's never too late. It's never too late. I'm still breathing, you know.
Yeah. You can't dig in that hole.
It was his first time at council comments. My dad, my wife, my beautiful kids, forgive me.
Blame it on the nerves. Mayor Wilson, your address, please.
Sullivan.
Uh-oh.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh.
Did I flashback? Mayor Sullivan, wow, will you ever forgive me? Old habit.
You just thought this four years was going to be...
That might make the news tonight.
That's all right. We still love you.
Thank you. I just want to thank my family and my friends. My family has taken up almost the whole room. Thank y'all so much for being here. Thank you to my friends and the long list of cheerleaders who have been by my side for the past several months, and thank you to the residents of Fairhope for who elected me. I know that there's going to be tough decisions to make, and I know that there will be days that I question why I ran for mayor of Fairhope. I know that that's going to happen, but none of that will ever overshadow the love that I have for our community, the appreciation that I have for the city employees, and the respect that I have for the council members who will serve alongside of me. Cooperation between the mayor and the council is crucial to the success of our city, and it's going to be crucial in tackling the important issues and projects that we have, and I appreciate you having faith in me to serve as utility superintendent. I appreciate that. Thank you again for allowing me this opportunity to the residents of Fairhope, and I'll work hard to be the leader that you deserve, and know that my door is always open and that every decision that I make will be based on what I think is best for Fairhope, and that will always be my priority, even if it's always not the easy decision. So thank you again, and I just look forward to the next four years. Thank you.
All right, very good.
Thank you, Mayor Sullivan. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment, counsel.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you for being here.